Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council on January 23rd. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Vales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
And Mayor Stone.
Here. And I will turn it over now to Councilmember Duer for the pledge.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We recently passed Martin Luther King Junior Day, and every year I like to spend some time reflecting upon the words of Dr. King, thinking through ways that I personally improved, but also made mistakes. The same for our country, the same for the wider world in the reflection. I share a very similar theological outlook to Dr. King, so I look to him, share wisdom about the world from a different perspective and to learn. I purposely spend time reading through his speeches, and in particular, I gravitate towards some of the lesser-known ones to learn and to improve. This year, I read "Our God Is Marching On," delivered in 1965 at the State House in Alabama. While a full recitation of the speech would probably be too long here, the speech is particularly powerful because of its repetition of the phrase "Let us march on," which describes a way that life needs to improve towards the fulfillment of the American dream. Reflecting on these points, I thought that while we tend to hear bad news on the nightly news regularly, in so many areas, we have seen areas of improvement towards MLK's "Let us march on" goals. There's clearly more work to do to fulfill Dr. King's admonition to judge all people by the content of their character, but we have also made some vast strides here in the United States and in many parts of the world in improving living standards for many people. I was caught, though, by one particular phrase in Reverend King's speech. "Let us march on ballot boxes until we send to our city councils, state legislatures, and the United States Congress men who will not fear to do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly with thy God," a reference to the Old Testament prophet Micah, chapter six, verse eight. As members of Beaver Creek City Council, honored by the citizens of our community to fill these seats for a term, may we do that, to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with the Lord. Please join me in a moment of silence considering the legacy and the words of Dr. King. Thank you.
All right, we have an agenda before us this evening that needs to be amended. We need to add an executive session after item L. So I have a motion to consider that.
So moved.
Move to amend the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda by adding an executive session as L2, I guess it can be. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes. First is January 9th, the council work session.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I guess I need that, don't I? Now I need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, how about those minutes from January 9th? The work sessions start with.
Movie approved, January 9th minutes, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the January 9th work session.
Work session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Obstain? Thank you. And now for the January 9th council regular session meeting. Any comments? Motion?
Motion to approve the January 9th, 2023 council regular session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January 9th for the regular session meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 23-1.
Ordinance 23-1, an ordinance amending the zoning designation on several parcels on the zoning map to remove multi-zone property designations.
All right, this ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Schwartz. But before we ask for a motion, is there any comment that we need from anybody? Nothing from staff? Questions from council?
Just a real quick question on my end, sorry, because I missed this last meeting. The property owners, as I said, were all notified except for three. Was there any update to that? Or they all gave their consent except for the three, but everyone was notified?
Everybody who's on the list is notified. The three is the ones we couldn't get a contact.
All right, sorry, I just wasn't sure if there was any update to the three that couldn't be reached.
No, I mean, we, multiple times, we tried, and we'd have to start the process over. We can with those three at a later date, but we wanted to get the project rolling.
Thank you.
Move to approve ordinance 23-1.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 23-2.
Ordinance 23-2, an ordinance rezoning 8.429 acres from R-1A, one-family residential, and A-1 agricultural, further described as Book Four, Page Four, Parcel Six, and Parcel Fourteen on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio, to R-PUD 22-4 residential planned unit development.
Thank you. This also is a second reading, and this was sponsored by Councilmember Curran. Any comments? Any further input from staff? Any comments? Questions?
I just have a quick question on the limited, or the permitted uses of the PUD. It says public community-centered buildings, and then in where it's prohibited, it says recreational buildings. I guess I'm just looking, is there a difference there, or what would that be?
You know, we would look at recreational buildings similar to gyms or the like, where you would have outdoor sports fields and things like that on a private map.
I know some clubhouses have gyms in them, and this one might, so I just want to make sure that that was still, if they had that, they could do that for that.
Yeah, I mean, it's more of a private versus public and community.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember?
Your Honor, I'd move to approve ordinance 23-2.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next is ordinance 23-3.
Ordinance 23-3, an ordinance to rezone 10.177 acres from R1-A, one-family residential, to A-1 agricultural, further described as Book Two, Page Eight, Parcel Seventy-four on the property tax maps of Green County, Ohio.
Thank you. This also is a second reading, and it's sponsored by Councilmember Duer. Before we go there, is any further input from the staff? Any questions from council? Seeing none, sir?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is ordinance 23-4.
Ordinance 23-4, an ordinance repealing current personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek and adopting new personnel rules and regulations for the city of Beaver Creek as an emergency.
All right, the staff has asked that this ordinance be tabled, and so do I have a motion to do so?
But...
Until the next regular meeting, all right.
Motion to table ordinance 23-4 until February 13th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 23-4 to the February 13th regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. Next is ordinance 23-5.
Ordinance 23-5, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beaver Creek and declaring an emergency. This is something that's done periodically, usually annually, under the Ohio Revised Code's updates. Although the ordinances were previously adopted, this allows the updated Ohio Revised Code sections and any new zoning code updates to be adopted by city council. The process is completed, and to be in compliance with Section 731.21 of the Ohio Revised Code, Supplement Thirty-three, is the latest update. This is done so as any emergency to allow, as an emergency, to allow the city to use the current version as the Code of Ordinances immediately.
Questions? All right. This is, this is an ordinance, so is there anyone present tonight that would like to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move forward. Any further discussion from council? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance 23-5 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-5 as an emergency. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vales.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. Next is Resolution 23-6.
Resolution 23-6, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into farm lease agreement with Daniel L. Robinett to farm approximately 55 acres of land currently owned by the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Mr. Landrum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a land that we recently purchased. This is across the street from the new park land off of Grange Hall Road. This is two parcels, tracks about 55, 56 acres. We are continuing because of the water project, stormwater project that we will be doing. Will not be started until after at least fall season, so we are continuing with the farmer, that the Research Park Foundation had an agreement with the farmer to go ahead and farm the land, so we're going to go ahead and do the same, let the farm land be farmed. It's about 33 acres that is actually farmable, but also this allows, by farming this, we not only get a little bit of revenue, but it saves us on having to mow it basically and chop the weeds down. So just ask for your approval so we can enter into this farming agreement.
Questions?
Feed corn, soybeans? Don't know.
I don't know.
Just curious.
Yeah.
That's what he had there.
Let's buy whatever the rotation is.
Right. All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 23-6.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 23-7.
Resolution, excuse me, 23-7, a resolution to proceed to levy an additional tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19 and subsection 5705.19J, as amended for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, buildings, and sites for such buildings used directly in the operation of the police department for the payment of salaries of permanent or part-time police, communications, or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel pursuant to Section 145.48 or 742.33 of the Ohio Revised Code, or for the other related costs which levy shall be blank mills, and which levy shall run for a continuing period of time pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19, and declaring the question of the additional tax levy shall be submitted to the electors at the election to be held May 2, 2023.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Landrum, you want to?
Yes, if I may, yes, please. I'm not going to go back into the full detail that I previously did last meeting, but just to touch on a couple things for the funding, you know, about 75% of the police budget is personnel cost, and the other 25% is dealing with basically capital and other expenses from electric to building repairs, to vehicles, to, you know, all the computers and all the other non-personnel types of costs. It's been nine years since 2014 without any new funding, and, you know, one thing that's why it's been nine years, because it's really been five years, is what we project before expenses take over revenue coming in due to inflationary costs, but it's been nine years because of other additional funds that we've used. CARES money, ARPA money, we've had over $2 million go directly to the police fund to help lengthen the levy before coming back to voters. The levy projections that this chart shows specifically the top, you can see where 1.5 million deficit, and it just grows 1.8, 2.1, and it'll continue to grow. As while that grows, the fund balance drops, and that's where we go down to a point of below the 20% fund balance that city council has deemed as appropriate fund balance for all operation funds. And before long, you know, of course, we're negative, and we can't go negative. We're not the federal government. We must balance our budgets. Future actions here, you know, again, 75% of the police department is budget, so, or is personnel cost. So, you know, if we had to cut, I mean, that's, that's bottom line is, you know, you don't have a whole lot to choose from when it comes down to it, and it's something we don't want to get up against a hard wall on. Before you are two options, last time you gave the county auditor two options to submit for certification. We received the two certifications back from the county auditor. Option one is 1.2 mills. The revenue from the county auditors will receive about $2 million, $13,000 a year. Cost of 100,000 appraised value for a home is $42. Option one is just basically the current operations levels currently to maintain capital equipment replacement, and option two is 1.8, and it's a little over 3 million, and it's cost 100,000 appraised value of a home, $63. This is everything the option one gives, but plus additional five officers and the related capital equipment needed for those five officers. It does, again, the five officers, when we think of five officers, basically when we're thinking of six, there's anywhere from four to six officers on duty at one time in a 27.7 square mile city, with the MOF all the way down past Indian Ripple, all the way up to Colonel Glenn. It takes just a couple calls where two officers have to report that everything is tied up for that large of a city. So when you're talking five officers, when you're including, if they're sick, workers comp, vacation, all those kinds of things, really, five officers sounds like a lot, but it's really pretty much giving you one per shift extra. So it's not an absorbent like we're adding 10 officers per shift, or people think we might be adding five officers per shift. That's not the case. So just keep that in mind, it's what option two offers. I just want to note that these amounts are per county auditor certifications, and I did want to note that neither option one or option two, neither option includes funding for a new police facility or building. That was part of last November's decision by a council that was on the ballot, the 2.5 mills that included for a new facility. It's not that that's not needed, it still is, but that is not included in this funding either option. Just as a property tax, the levy timeline, of course, you already did certification, so tonight you're selecting whether or not to put one of the two options onto the ballot, which is due to the Board of Elections by February 10th, and of course, Election Day is May 2nd. I'd be happy, myself or Mr. Casera, be more than glad to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you. And this, just to repeat just a little bit, this is, we all know that a new facility is needed for our police, and the voters decided last time that they wanted to do that a different way, or at least the message we got. They wanted that to be a separate ballot issue, and so when we asked the county auditor to certify these two amounts, it did not include that building. So the, we have to make a decision tonight whether to put the 1.2 mill, which keeps the status quo, does not add any manpower, and in my humble opinion, we are stretched to the limits as it is. The other one, of course, is the 1.8, which would add some additional officers, and, you know, it doesn't matter what profession you are, you're in, if you are overworked, you can cause problems down the road. I mean, accidents can happen, is what I'm saying. And so I, for one, will be supporting the 1.8. Just wanted to get that out front. But now the floor is open, please discuss which, I don't know if you want to go around the room and pick one, or if you just want to make general comments, you're welcome to.
Well, Your Honor, I support also the 1.8. As you said before, I think the citizens are reacting to the facility, not to the need for additional officers to patrol our city. And as you indicated, the officers can be overworked as well as stressed in a large city like we have, and I think that the citizens would be open to the 1.80. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Input?
I tend to agree with both comments that were made. I also am in support of the 1.8 mills. It's been too long since we've added additional officers to our force. Our city has grown exponentially, and our officers deserve to have a break. They've been very overworked over the past three, four years, and so I think that adding at least one additional officer to each shift will give them a lot more flexibility and will maintain the level of service that our residents have come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I'll probably repeat a bunch of what's been said, but I think it's important to get my opinion on the record, too. You know, the last time I supported the 2.5-mill levy, because I really strongly believe we need more officers. We do need a new police station, but at the same time, I've listened to our voters, and I think it's good that we went back to the drawing board and listened to them, and so I do not think that we need to sacrifice a five-officer option. So I am in charge, in favor of the 1.8. Traffic in the community is getting worse every day. We see those monthly crime stats that the chief provides to us, the overtime that is spent by our officers, and the bottom line is, we haven't had any new funding for the police in nine years. So I'm in support of the 1.8 mill. I would like to, you know, charge the chief with becoming fully staffed. It's something that we have struggled with ongoing, so I hope that we can get the support of our community to get those five new officers and then go out and hire them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. According to the FBI, for every 1,000 residents of a city, there should be, for a city our size, somewhere between 1.4 and 1.5 officers. And so, given our size in excess of 47,000, we'd put it somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 officers, and so I think we don't need anywhere near that number, but at the same time, we have been much lower than that FBI recommendation for some time. And given what's been said by my fellow council members and by the city manager, simply the size of the city, logistically getting from the green to the Fairfield Commons Mall and to other locations, to have an additional officer per shift, I think would go a long way. It also speaks to morale across the police, to the police force, to say the community's behind them, and so I, too, am in support of the 1.8-mill option.
Thank you, yes. I'm in favor of the 1.8 as well. I mean, we're averaging just right over one officer per 1,000 residents here, which is a lot less than what the FBI recommends. And I think back in 1996, since then, we've grown by over 10,000 people, and we've only added four officers. And that puts a lot of extra, I think, undue stress and work on these guys, and so I'm in favor of the 1.8.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'll just join in what everybody else is saying, but I want to add two points. Just this past Saturday, driving around Beaver Creek in the morning, I saw two different sections of our city where our officers had their lights on, and they were responding to incidents and calls. That was just two separate sets, and immediately I started thinking, okay, who does that leave left over, and where are they, and what are they doing? The other thing, too, is we've been very blessed to have the Citizens Unpreventable Patrol, our COPP program, but that is something we can't rely on heavily when it comes to enforcement of certain areas and as far as certain calls that we get. So it's been great to have that, but we absolutely do need the additional staffing. And the last point I'll make is, council received a really great email from a few residents asking questions about the statistics that we use and the numbers that we put out, and what was great about it was they did a lot of research before coming to us, and I loved it. But I would love to see it before you guys go to the ballot. By the time you vote and cast your vote and ask us all these qualifying questions, it's a little too late for us to answer, and then people will say, oh, well, I didn't know that ahead of time. So we try to put out as much information as we can. If you have any questions, please do reach out to any of us on council, to staff. You know, Chief does a great job responding to questions, too, and he loves receiving them. So if you can ask us any questions you have before you go vote, we would greatly appreciate it to explain this. I absolutely think we need a new building. I understand that that's not what residents want right now, and we are going to try to get creative to find another way to do that, but this is a community where we absolutely need our officers.
Thank you. All right, well, I think I know what's going to happen next, but we need a motion to amend Resolution 23-7 by inserting the 1.8-mill levy.
Move to amend the resolution, Your Honor, 23-7, and to include the 1.80 millage.
Is that adequate, Steve? Just one...
And completing the remaining necessary information in the legislation provided...
There's more than one blank.
There's a number of blanks in there.
23-7 by inserting 1.8 mills and completing the remaining necessary information in the legislation with information provided in the county auditor certification.
Thank you.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to amend Resolution 23-7. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve? I would do a roll call, but I think before we do that, if it's on...
On the amended? On the amendment?
On the amendment, do the amendment first, and then we'll...
All right, so we'll ask for a roll call on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Vales.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. All right, now I need a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
And Mayor, before we go through that, maybe with Mr. Landrum and Mr. Caser, because I would like to go through the blanks and just make sure that we're filling this in exactly as, and Bill, I don't know if you filled it in.
No, we will, it's not filled in right now.
Well, yeah, before they vote, I'd like to just make sure...
All the blanks, either 1.8 mills will be filled in...
Yep.
Or the amount of the revenue, that's why it's displayed, 3,200,000, or the $63 per 100,000.
Yep.
Those are, all the blanks are just multiple times that that is done.
Yep.
It's done in section three and in section five with the actual ballot language, as well as the header.
Yep.
So those are basically the three types of blanks, the revenue amount, the cost per 100,000, and the actual millage, which is 1.8. That's being...
Yeah, and I penciled all this in, so that's, that is what you're voting on. I just want to make sure that, for the record, that that's the information that is on this amended, filled-in resolution.
And every, every one of those are, that's why we include it in the motion, are part of the certificate from the auditor. Those are directly taken from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a motion to approve the amended Resolution 23-7. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vales.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. And I just want to add one little thing, and that is, this levy will provide... And I just want to add one little thing, and that is, this levy will provide the funds necessary to increase our police force and provide our officers with the equipment necessary for them to do their jobs safely and effectively. Thank you very much. All right, next is Resolution 23-8.
Resolution 23-8, a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Beaver Creek Community Foundation.
Ms. Farrell.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. So, we have an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Beaver Creek Community Foundation. There's a max ask for $2,000. If awarded this grant, we would put it towards the Whartonshire Park Roof Project. We're replacing those roofs this spring, all four cabins, so a lot of that money, we also received money from the Dayton Foundation this past fall, and so that $2,000 will help offset from the park's operating funds.
Very good. Questions? Never hurts to ask, does it?
It never hurts to ask, that's absolutely correct, sir.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 23-8.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 23-8. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council time. All right, Mr. Dewar, you never get to go first, how about going? Surprise, surprise.
I think I did once, Mayor, so, very neat, I appreciate it, thanks.
I would like to start by wishing Councilmember Bales a very happy birthday.
Oh, my. Wow. I guess he should have gone first.
And I'll keep things short, I'd like also to give a shout out to Katie Carrico for her work on Next Door and engaging the community and setting up kind of a new opportunity for engagement there, and a great place for citizens to ask questions, and so, Katie, thanks for your work and the way you engage the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, birthday, boy.
Well, I'll go off script a little bit and echo Councilman Dewar's comments. I think our engagement efforts in the last year have been fantastic, and both on social media, in the newspaper, and in our publications, so, thank you, and great comment. Secondly, myself and the mayor and Mrs. Stone and Councilmember Adams got to attend the J.C. Penney Beauty Department ribbon cutting on Friday. I guess they had completely closed that section and remodeled it, and looks really nice. So, for those of you looking for some more beauty products, keep the J.C. Penney Beauty section in mind, it's very nice, right inside the mall, very easy to get to. This Wednesday, I'll be attending the Green County Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee, hosted by Sanitary Engineering, so I will bring back any report that I hear from that committee. And last week, I attended the Family Violence Prevention Center Board of Directors meeting. I really want to thank, again, I may have thanked them publicly already, but the Green County Commissioners have provided the Family Violence Prevention Center with $1.1 million to expand their organizational mission, which they'll be using to buy another piece of property. And so they're doing amazing work in our community and throughout Green County, and so just wanted to give them a shout out. They also have an upcoming spring fling event on April 28th at the Green County Expo Center, so mark your calendars, I'll be contacting you. Wanted to obviously thank our Public Service Department for getting out over the weekend and spending their weekend plowing snow. Got more than expected, at least than I expected, but, you know, by late afternoon, the roads were in pretty good shape, so thank you very much. And finally, I wanted to thank former Mayor Brian Jarvis. He's been, he's been running a group called Beaver Creek Matters for over four years. He hosts monthly meetings on various topics that sometimes involve the city, sometimes don't, but just about Beaver Creek, and he announced last week that he was no longer going to be doing that, because he's taking a volunteer leadership position with the Miami Valley Military Affairs Association. So I wanted to thank him for his continued service and appreciated those meetings. That's all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kern.
Yes, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to attend the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Open House, took place here last week, and it was really exciting. They wanted to showcase something I think is very vital for small businesses throughout Beaver Creek, an opportunity to use the technical capability of the chamber to get the message out as to what they're doing, what kind of work they're involved in, and had a nice turnout of people over at the Beaver Creek Chamber to kind of celebrate that particular event. It was really outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share, as most of you know, I sit on the Board of Directors for Quanis of Beaver Creek, and this year, we have started a reverse raffle for the first year that's going to take place on February 11th at 6:00 at the Holiday Inn. It's called Share the Love, and so it's going to be a Valentine's Day theme, but you have a chance to win up to $1,000 in the reverse raffle, so I would encourage anyone that's interested to buy tickets, or if you're a small business owner or a business owner in the community and would like to contribute or would like to sponsor the event, please reach out, we are also looking for sponsors. And the next thing, I just wanted to also echo the words, I think, of Councilmember Bales with Public Service. I wanted to thank them for having the streets cleaned, not only on Sunday, but this morning as well. I went out and there was a little bit of ice buildup because it got so cold overnight. I had a dentist appointment at 8:00, and by the time I came back at 9:00, the roads were perfectly clear again, so just want to thank them for all of their hard work over the weekend. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, sir. I'd also like to incur, the Public Service Street Department did a great job, they really did, they're out there, I think they were out there early, trying to dress the roads a little bit, which helped, but there was a lot of snow. Also, and to gain you a bit that Katie's been doing with the community, I think it's really welcome. I mean, it's, a lot of people out there really want to know the information, and this gives them another avenue of obtaining that. I was able to do the show choir invitational at the high school again over Martin Luther King Weekend, and I realize that it's my 16th year doing it as stage manager, and it's only been in existence for 21 years, so I guess I've pretty much done the whole thing on that one. And then Citizens Police Academy, I know it's going to be mentioned here again, so all the information will be up there, but that starts February 1st, which is a week from Wednesday. Please try to attend that if you can, it will give you a little bit of insight, look into what a police officer does day to day. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Bales.
Thank you.
Great. I was also going to mention Citizens Police Academy, and especially for anyone who has any questions about the levies, I think this is a great way for you to see into what it is our officers do on a daily basis. And then I will be attending the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, MVRPC, meeting this Thursday for the Board of Directors as well as the Executive Committee. We did just get a little bit more funding there from that, so that's exciting on some future projects, and I'll report back as I know more from this meeting Thursday. And that's about it for me.
All right, thank you. And while I know the drivers don't think that snow was pretty, it was a beautiful snow we had, it really was, and it, but no, thanks for the job well done, and why didn't it come on a Monday or Tuesday instead of a Sunday? You just never know. But thanks again.
There were several kids at school that were wondering that, too.
Oh, me. All right, I don't have a whole lot to add, it's been, it's been a great start to the January's been good, we've got a lot of things accomplished this month, as you saw by the ordinances, that we seem to be, several of them tonight. So with that, I'm going to, do we have anniversaries tonight?
No.
No anniversaries today?
No.
All right, so I'll turn it over to the city manager, please.
I think you just, a few announcements. The road closure on Shaker Town Road between Rustic Trail and Cartledge Drive will be closed beginning Monday, January 30th. This is, it'll be about 30 days, it's a big culvert, number one, because the current culvert is getting older, but number two, so that the road will be able to be widened later this year. So it will be hard close, meaning even emergency vehicles can't go through, because the road won't be there when they have the culvert out, kind of like what they did on Dayton-Zenia a long time ago, a couple years ago, that was a hard close. If there's any additional questions, those, please contact Engineering Division by calling 427-5513. And for those, I believe the sign has already changed, originally said 30 to 90 days, contractor put that sign out, it's now been corrected to reflect a 30-day closure. And always weather permitting, we always have to add that. As just been said, Citizens Police Academy, this is the last chance, we've extended this date because we still have openings, I would strongly encourage people to sign up, because unfortunately, if we don't get enough to sign up, it probably would be postponed. So we strongly encourage, please get out there today and sign up. Topics include criminal justice system, patrol procedures, traffic and drug enforcement, firearms training, and ride along with officer. It is eye-opening if you have not experienced this. So it begins February 1st, so get out there, visit beaver creek ohio.gov, Citizens Police Academy, to fill out an application, so please look for that. And Parks and Recreation's Culture Snowman Contest, this is perfect timing, of course, that was a great picture that we found with the Joe Burrow Cincinnati Bengals Snowman, that was, that was pretty awesome. So this weekend, the snow is perfect for building a snowman. Unfortunately, I say unfortunately, it looks like we're going to be given more snow this week to build a bigger snowman, so take some pictures of your snowmen and creature to, and send to the parks@beaver creek ohio.gov by February 17th. We'll share it on our Facebook pages, and the family who submits the photo with the most reactions will win a prize through Beaver Creek's Park and Recreation Culture Division. This is always popular every year, so when we have snow, the creations are very, people are very creative with it, and of course, we love to see the kids smile to help build whatever it is that they built, so please submit those. Just, you know, a lot of people have been getting a lot of responses on Next Door or whatever about what's going on along Grange Hall, just south of Shaker Town, between Shaker Town and Indian Ripple. That is a stormwater sanitary engineering, sorry, sanitary engineering project, Green County, that's going to help improve some of the public water systems to residents, so they're installing two water mains along Grange Hall, one near Libra, if I can get that, Libra, and another near Timberleaf, and this will eliminate the gap in the water system and improve water flow in the area. And they're also doing something else along, a booster station along the YMCA building on Barronwood as part of the upgrade. So if you have any questions, that's what's going on, it's not a city project, it's actually Green County does the water for the city, but if you have any questions, Green County Sanitary Engineering is 562-7450, and we're always glad to help with a question if we can answer it as well. Our engineering department works closely with them. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Please come forward. Just if you would give us your name and address, please, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, or get some time donated. Is that going to work?
Yeah, I hope so. I'll try and keep time. So Sarah Wallentine, address is 2807 Liga Court, and I just want to start off by saying, I did send an email to council about the police levy. I had, my partner and I, who also reside at the same residence, we had several questions, and so we appreciate the timely responses from Mr. Landrum and Chief Fiorita, hopefully I got that right. So, thanks a lot for the responses and the clarifications. We still would like to follow up on some topics, especially the data that's tracked by the police department, and just trying to understand everything that goes into the data. The report that the police department puts out annually, there's just like a little bit of fidelity in the data that we're not seeing and we have questions about, so we would like to follow up on that. But my main comment for the council tonight, most of you referenced that you were thinking the city responded in the November 22 ballot with a posel, opposition to a building, and I'm just curious on a general level, like, how is this feedback being communicated back to the city council to then make a decision, okay, we eliminate that from the ballot measure and propose a new ballot measure, removing that? So I'm really interested in how that city feedback or the citizen feedback is collected. I wasn't really aware of much myself, so that's my question for the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And someone will be in touch to try to explain to you where feedback comes from, and it's not just, it's not a formal process, but thanks for the question. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move forward with, on the agenda, and at this time, do we have a motion for executive session?
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Purchase of Property for Public Purposes.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Yes. And for the public's benefit, there will be no action taken when we return, but if you wish to wait on us, we will be back here to reconvene this meeting so that we can exit, but there will be no action taken. So thank you very much.